I'd like to welcome what is a large audience this evening to the April 29th Board of the Select Board meeting. My name is Jim Lehan. I'm joined by my two fellow board members, Anita Mecklenburg and Mr. Kevin Roach. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. In the beginning of every meeting, we do offer an opportunity for public comment. We reserve it for anyone that wishes to join. Is there anyone here this evening that was here for public comment?
How are we doing? John Griffin, 55 for St. Laura Ave. I'm very happy that Kingsbury Pond made it to the agenda tonight. It didn't list that Kingsbury Pond was on there. It listed a water emergency. I just want to clear up that Norfolk doesn't have a water supply problem at all. Actually, our water's really good and we have a pond problem. You know, this started in 1964 with a bad land deal that was behind doors that, you know, didn't go to a town vote. We're all asking for, one, the pond to get better, two, for accountability. We're looking, you know, for, to see documents that things are moving along. We want, you know, the pond to get better sooner in any way we possibly can. I want to re- I want to let you know, we lost nine feet of water in the pond in one year. We've, we have all the data, we have the science, you know, that's pretty much, I'm hoping today we're going to get to some real answers and get, get to this thing. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? Donna?
The lovely Donna Jones. Thank you. Donna Jones, North Street, here advocating for a digital sign for town-related messages, town and community messages. I know it's on the agenda later. A little bit of history, back in about 2009, when Walgreens area was being developed, the planning board was saying, gee, we should go to have a sign out there to make community announcements. And all that got done was that little shelter that may cover four people and they couldn't decide, do we put paper up? Do we put a digital display? Nothing got done. About 2021, we were having an anniversary, we were going to close the streets for a parade. The then-town administrator and the building commissioner said, let's put an article on town meeting to have municipal use only lit from within sign. Well, that got turned down because it didn't apply to the small businesses. Then in April 2024, the highway department and the director and the town clerk came because they needed a special permit to put their digitally-lit signs on public property. But two planning board members were strongly advocating, we'll give you permission for the temporary, but we really want a permanent sign. So some of the messages could be fire department, open house, burn permits available, parade, expect delays, taxes or water bill due, flu shot clinic, early voting, election day, community day, fireworks, concerts on the hill, and farmer's market. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
And I believe I did see another hand back there for public comment?
Yes, sir.
Please come on up, sir. If you could just give your name and address.
Sure. My name is Eric Stahl and it's Zero Everett Street. It's a parcel of land. So anyway, I, just one moment, please. I'm a bit nervous.
Gets easier.
Thank you. I just want to say up to this point, you haven't heard from me earlier because I've been afraid of litigation from the buyer related to what I'm about to talk about. So first off, my name is Eric Stahl. I like to think I'm a regular guy and I'm the son of the late Bob Stahl, proud Norfolk landowner. He loved living in, living in Rentham, Norfolk and didn't vacation because he loved, he loved his home so much. He passed suddenly during the COVID pandemic and I inherited a parcel of land, partially in Norfolk. So the property lies at the corner of Everett Street and Route 115. It was and is like the only significant piece of my father's estate and the kind of only one I have that could give me the chance to sort of, to sort of start over. And I'll get to that in a moment. So after my father passed, I, I suffered a separation from a beloved partner of 12 years. My health became unstable and a lot of experimental remedies were taken on by my physicians, which have all kind of taken a toll. And I've now been without a permanent residence since early 2024. My aunt and uncle have, have put me up and kind of without them, I would have been in big trouble. They're with me here. Like others, I admit to making mistakes under pressure and especially in poor health. This parcel of land is the one thing I have left for my father's legacy and I, it's, it's kind of what I'm, I'm banking on to help rebuild my life into a stable life, repair my health and to begin to prepare for a future family. In 2024, facing grief and burnout and significant medical challenges, including a congenital spine condition with severe pain and more recently heart issues, I signed, I signed an agreement with the buyer, not fully understand, understanding the full implications, much of which was fine print. I was overwhelmed, undersupervised, and made a decision while under the care of physician and on several medications. Remarks from around me came to believe, made me come to believe that much of this land was swampland and largely unbuildable, save for potentially, potentially one residence. I believe that sentiment and I, I get the impression now that what I thought I knew back then was, was just incorrect. So the contract I signed gives the town of Norfolk the right to purchase the land now under fair market value. And I understand this is part of Chapter 61B and it's, it's considered the right of first refusal. What I'm respectfully asking tonight is that you consider the release of the parcel of land from that process or if possible, pause any vote to kind of allow further review and time to communicate. I recently asked the buyer, I actually asked the buyer a couple of months ago to terminate the contract, but I spoke with him just a few days ago if he would consider it because I thought today was the vote, vote to decide what kind of, what, what the town was going to do. And well, his response was that if, if the town released me from the, from the contract and he would, he would release me from the contract as long as the town would sign some type of waiver of general liability. So what I'll say is like if, if this is something you do allow, and I realize it's, it's a lot to consider, that it would allow me to take a step back, work with my family and a professional land consultant to approach this properly and to find a buyer who will potentially pay fair value for the land. And I'm certainly in no way in opposition to, you know, cooperating with the town and, and looking for any kind of potential way to collaborate. So to me, this isn't just about profit, it's about recovering from a loss and recovering from loss and avoiding permanent financial damage from a decision I made while impaired by a doctor's orders, undersupervised, pressured, and frankly, physically, physically hungry. I'm not asking the town to give anything away. What I believe I'm asking for is a second chance to handle my family's legacy properly at a reasonable, fair value with my family, with professional support, with respect for the town's future right of first refusal if, if and when we were to go to market again. And I, I just want to mention my, my family wanted to retain a small piece of, of this parcel, of this kind of wetlands, to kind of historically keep our 1756 farm conserved for future generations. And so lastly, I just wanted to say that kind of during the session or after the session, I'm, I'm open to any questions that you may not be able to ask during, and I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment this evening? Seeing none, we will move to the agenda. Justin?
All right. So the first agenda is to consider ratifying my recommendation for police chief. Before I mention who I am recommending before the board, I just want to briefly talk about our process a little bit. Also want to recognize our team here, you know, Police Chief Hines to Venice. I see another police chief from a neighboring community. This is exciting time. But as part of this process, Chief Hines notified us several months ago that he was retiring. We underwent a process. We advertised this position. We had interviews with several candidates. Those interviews consisted of a select board member, Police Chief Hines, a police chief from a neighboring community. We also then conducted a police chief assessment, which was consisted of multiple former police chiefs, a fire chief, HR professional. We used that to sort of help us finalize this decision. My recommendation is to, for a police chief is James Jim Barrett. The board has his resume in his packet, a cover letter. I'm going to ask Jim to come up before you all. I just want to say on my end, I'm, I'm very proud to recommend Jim after getting to know him, after speaking with him, after speaking with many people who know him. He's very big on community policing. He's very big on moving this profession forward. So I give this recommendation highly. I know Chief Hines recommended him as well. He, he did fantastic on the assessment as well. So here's my recommendation and as part of this process, the board then obviously has to consider that recommendation, decide to ratify that appointment or not.
Thank you. Good evening.
Barrett, welcome. And I want to welcome your, your wife Fiona and, excuse me, your daughter Fiona and your wife Angela also joining you this evening. So it was really nice to have them here.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
I had the pleasure of being part of the interview process, so I've had the chance. In fact, we met in the parking lot.
We did.
And I just want to share with folks that history with Norfolk has been that we've always promoted from within. This year, we did not have a candidate within the department, but you are a Rentham gentleman and a KP grad.
I am.
And that's about as close to being within the department, I guess, as you can get. So welcome. But I've had the pleasure of spending a lot of time with you, so I want to turn it over to my counterparts and Ms. Mecklenburg?
Awesome.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Anita Mecklenburg. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
I just wanted to ask you, so with this appointment from this position, a two-part question, what do you think would be the biggest opportunities for you that would come from this position or opportunities, let's just say, opportunities that would come from this appointment? And what do you think would be the biggest challenges that would come from this appointment?
So the, the opportunity would be to return home to the community that I, that raised me, really. I grew up in Rentham, went through the whole public school system there, attended King Philip, went to the King Philip Junior High back when it was still called a junior high school, hoping that Norfolk will change it back to the junior high school. I don't know if that's going to happen anytime soon. But no, this is, this is home to me and this is just a nice welcome change later in my police career to be able to circle back after 28 years in Rentham, almost three years in Holliston. So the opportunities that I see here would be similar to the opportunities that Chief Stone and Holliston afforded me when I went to Holliston. Similar communities demographically, populations a little bit more in Holliston, but similar on, on, on almost all fronts. Engaging with the community was paramount and he allowed me to, to do a lot of different things within the community, hosting, you know, parent nights for public safety, cybersecurity, cyber safety for teens, helping parents and caregivers understand the technology challenges that, that our kids are enjoying today that we don't know a whole lot about. So, and I still-
back and watch that ceremony on, I know Donna was, played a big role in getting that on YouTube and it's, it's worth watching. Like it's a beautiful place, but learning a little bit about the history of that park and how it came was, was really cool. Do you want to add to that? Because you were there with me, Kevin, that day.
You did a great job revamping the park. The Lions, four or five years before, had made some trails and everything and they just got overtaken and everything. You did a great job going in.
Thank you so much. I'm so grateful it was able to come alive. So, yeah.
Awesome. So I'm going to read our proclamation at this time.
Please.
Whereas Santo Vincent Rizzo is a resident of the town of Norfolk and whereas Santo Vincent Rizzo is a member of the Norfolk Boy Scouts of America, Troop 80, and has been scouting for 10 years, starting in Cub Scouts and awarded Eagle Scout rank on October 24, 2024. And whereas Santo Vincent Rizzo has held leadership positions, including scribe, outdoor ethics guide, assistant patrol leader and patrol leader, and earned 30 merit badges. And whereas Santo Vincent Rizzo's Eagle project consisted of improving the overall accessibility at Fails Memorial Park, Norfolk, Santo met with the Historical Commission to seek approval for his project. He walked through the park with members of the Historical Commission, Conservation Commission, and Department of Public Works to determine areas where posts and signs could be placed and benches could be installed. Santo also obtained approval for the project from the Select Board. He managed this project and directed groups of scouts, ensuring they understood the objectives and had safe working procedures and timeframes. He worked to reclaim the park through clearing trails and establishing the main entrance. Some downloaded trees required supervised chainsaw use. Santo and the scouts spread 10 yards of wood chips at the main entrance, which were donated by the DPW and installed water breaks along the path to ensure that runoff would not be problematic. Excuse me. He installed trail posts funded by the Norfolk Lions and trail signs made at Norfolk MCI and hung trail blazers. Santo built and oversaw the installation of two benches overlooking Highland Lake. They're quite special. You should go see them. And to honor Bertha Fails' original intent to establish a bird sanctuary as part of the park, he directed the building and installation of six birdhouses with kits donated by carpentry by Tom Antonellis. On August 24th, 2024, Santo was recognized by the Historical Commission and the town of Norfolk for his efforts at the dedication of the benches to Barbara Bartholomew, a Norfolk historian, who was instrumental in the creation of Fails Memorial Park. And whereas the leadership and members of Troop 80 have been noted for outstanding citizenship and work within the local community and whereas the ideals of being an Eagle Scout, which will have a positive effect on the future of Santo, his family, and friends and acquaintances. Now, therefore, we, the Norfolk Select Board, issue this proclamation to Santo in recognition of being an outstanding young leader and wish him the best of success in his future endeavors and declare May 11th, 2025, as Santo Vincent Rizzo Day in Norfolk. And we encourage all citizens of our community to congratulate and celebrate with Santo Vincent Rizzo.
Thank you so much. Come on the whole table, guys.
Those are the best times.
Yes.
They are the best times. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, a public way is a letdown from what we just had, that's for sure. But it is next on the list.
So this is a typical step in the process of accepting a town road, which we will be doing for Avery Way at Maytown Meeting. As part of that process, we have to have a public meeting, it's not a public hearing. So the board has typically done this. You have the information regarding this way in your packet. We received no sort of correspondence with anyone, although a copy was sent to a Butters. So I think the board is now the question of you're going to move to lay out.
Mr. Roach, any questions?
None.
No, not at this time. I think it's awesome.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move that we vote to lay out Avery Way substantially and the location of the private way known as Avery Way.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item on the board's agenda is to consider the appointment of Ashley Caparrella as a member of the, yep, of the Cultural Council with a term expiration of June 30 of 2028. The Cultural Council voted unanimously to recommend her, a copy of her applications in the board's packet, but she's also in attendance. I do want to highlight, we have now appointed several members to the Cultural Council. So this is great. We're very proud of that. But Ashley's here, if you guys want to hear from her at all.
Ashley, would you like to come up and say a few words or if not, it's okay. Welcome.
That's okay. You don't have to talk. Don't take that personally. That's the thing I said.
It's not that bad. We're okay. Thanks for volunteering.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Should I?
Tell us about yourself.
Sure. My name's Ashley Caparrella. I've been living in Norfolk for about a year, but I was, I grew up in Medway, so been around the area. Last summer, I was involved with Franklin's Cultural Council. I painted one of the utility boxes. It took a few months and at that time, I was at the Town Common, so I talked a lot with the residents and they, I don't, they were always talking about the artwork in town and how much it meant to them. And then while I was there, they also had porch fests and different events going on and I really, I really loved it. It felt nice seeing that my art meant something and being connected to a community. And then I saw a posting on Facebook, I believe, that the Cultural Council here was looking for members. So I was, yeah, really excited for the opportunity.
Awesome. Great. Thanks for stepping up. Kevin?
No.
Thank you very much.
So pleased to have you here.
Oh, yeah. I'm excited. Thank you.
That's, that's a golf. Yeah.
Did I miss that?
Somebody knows.
Do I have a motion to appoint?
I move that we approve the appointment of Ashley Caparrella as a, as a member of the Cultural Council with the term expiration date of June 30, 2028.
Second.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you again.
And then the next item is another appointment for the Cultural Council. It's for the appointment of Mary Ann Kozlovsky.
Come, Mary?
With the term expiration of June 30 of 2028. And so same information is in the board's packet.
This is great.
So public speaking is not my thing.
That's okay.
You'll fit right in with the rest of us.
So let's see, what can I tell you? Resident of 17 Long Meadow Road in Norfolk. Let's see, what else? Grandmom to two, two grown children, stepmom now to three. So let's see, starting the second chapter of my life, did 30, 30, 30 some odd years with TJX Corporation, Home Goods, TJ Maxx, all that good stuff, emerging artist. And so, you know, had kind of seen the, the post and thought, this is something, I'm, I could finally get to do other things, you know, other than work and, and, you know, do other things. Did Girl Scouts, yeah, just want to be involved in the community, so.
Awesome. Well, we're thrilled to have you.
Thank you.
Get, get to spend the time you want to spend, where you want to spend it.
Exactly, yes. Doing the things that, yes, you have a passion for, you know, but yeah, yeah. So, yeah, that's it.
Perfect.
No, no questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to appoint?
I move that we approve the appointment of Mary Ann Kozlovsky. Am I saying that rightly?
You are.
To, as a member of the Cultural Council with the term expiration of June 30, 2028.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item on the-
I was wrong. There were highlights still to come.
Yes, definitely are. The next item on the agenda is consider approval of the use of Town Hill for several events. I'm not going to list all the dates, but these are regarding the Recreation Department's summer concert series, which are great. I'm sure we're going to have some great acts and then as well as tunes for talks. And then there's also fireworks scheduled for Community Day on Saturday, June 14th. So their dates and all that information is in the board's packet.
And are posted on, on the agenda.
Correct.
And public safety didn't have any?
No issues.
We can avoid having to read them all. How about, do you want to approve as, as listed in the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the use of the Town Hill on the dates listed in the agenda for the recreation, summer concert series and the fireworks on June 14th, 2025 for the fireworks or the rain date, June 15th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item on the board's agenda is to consider, it's the consideration of the Chapter 61 right of first refusal for Everett Street property. You know, just quick background, this was discussed at the March 18th meeting of the board's agenda. The Affordable Housing Trust formally voted to, in approval of purchasing this property. In the board's packet, you have a letter from the Conservation Commission supporting the, the purchase of this property. I do have Town Council, Andrew Bettinelli, here to talk to the process. We obviously received some information today, so I just want to have him run through that a little bit. And I know Sue Jacobson is here to speak on behalf of the Affordable Housing Trust, if you want to hear from them, but talk to Andrew first.
Sure. So just-
Welcome.
Thanks. Thank you. Just a quick reminder on why we're here. Chapter land is a program that allows property to be taxed in its current use rather than its highest and best use. And in exchange for that, the town obtains a right of first refusal should the property be sold. That process is kicked off by receiving a notice that the property owner intends to sell the property. We received the notice of the right of, under 61B on February 18th. That was about 70 days ago. The law provides the town with 120 days to determine whether or not to exercise its right of first refusal by meeting the offer that accompanies the, the notice. As we heard from the property owner tonight, there's some new information that's coming before the board. I think we have plenty of time to consider that information. Alternatively, if the board wants to exercise its right and may do so in compliance with the statute.
Well, I have a couple of questions on this. The way it was presented was that if we were to decline, then the purchaser would in turn decline. That seems to me to be completely backwards.
Yeah.
That makes no sense to me.
I agree.
It's just we're just giving up our right to purchase what we legally have a right to purchase at an established price that was established by the seller and agreed to by the buyer, or excuse me, established, I don't know who established the price, but in a mutually signed agreement. And if we pass it up, then who's to say that the person doesn't just go through with the sale and keep the, you know, buy the land? We have no rights.
The town, I don't recommend that the town take any action affirmatively declining its right. The process, if the property owner wants to start over, would be to notify the town that it's withdrawing its, its offer and we then retain the right of first refusal should they obtain a different offer in the future. But the town should not waive its right or notify-
I don't know how we really can. And we've not received any notification that that offer has been withdrawn. Questions?
Well, a similar question because it seems like if we waive that right and then it puts all, it seemed backwards to me as well.
Correct. And I'm not recommending that the board waive its right. The options for the board are to exercise its right or to continue to, to wait. Like I said, we have 120 days to exercise the right and my opinion is- Like I said, we have 120 days to exercise the right, and my opinion is that it should be, if the property owner is not in fact moving ahead, they can withdraw their, their notice that they sent to the town, but there's nothing for the town to do affirmatively to decline the offer. That, that would be incorrect under the statute.
Okay.
The town is not, the, the town should not waive its right.
What would happen, I've, I've been involved in several 61A and 61B purchases in the past. I've never had anything quite like this, so. What would happen if we exercised that right this evening?
Sure.
And then the buyer withdrew his offer? Is there any, we still have purchased the land, is that correct?
Correct.
So the deal is a deal?
Well, we have exercised our right, and we still have to come to an agreement with the seller. They still have to sign the PNS, and if they're unwilling to sign the PNS, then, you know, there is some risk that we would have to enforce our rights.
Okay. But can the, if the, I'm just trying to understand, because it's, it's unique to me. If the purchaser of the land did decide not to purchase it and sent us a letter saying, I'm withdrawing my offer, even after we have voted, we're still in a deal, correct? Okay.
What was the last thing you said, Jim? We're still in the deal?
We still purchased the land, because we purchased it with an active purchase and sale agreement in play. We have, we have nothing other than the documents that were sent with the purchase and sale at a defined price, and we can only match the price. We, we don't go up or down, we have to match it.
So our choices today, then, based on what I'm hearing you say, is our choices are not just to wait or to waive, we could, we could actually act on making the purchase.
Could. And I think you're, in many respects, you don't want, you're not suggesting we should waive this in any way.
No, the town, if the town waives its right, then the seller is free to sell the property.
Yeah. I mean, we, we have, our practice has been, at least, and has, we haven't had a lot of these, but I can remember two that I was involved in, that if we have a, a town board or a, you know, recreation or whatever that is interested, I think of the Weaver property, which was over behind Jane and Paul's Farm, 22, 23 acres. A developer had a purchase and sale, we ended up buying that land. And there's another one that I've, the location is eluding me. But we have a board that wants to purchase it, that has a use for that land, has, is self-funded in order to purchase that land, so it's not subject to any town meeting approval. It's been our practice to honor that request when a board steps forward in wanting to purchase that land. I, I don't know that we have, I mean, that's what, to me, that's what we should do. I just, I don't know how else to say it.
That's a policy decision for the board to make.
I'm sorry?
That's a policy decision for the board to make.
I know.
So it seems to me we have, then, let's assume that we're not going to waive that right, because that doesn't seem like a sensible thing, it's not the advice of council. So then, within that, we have two choices, then. We can wait a little bit, because we did just get this information literally today, so we just got this information today, and so we could wait for some of the information, or we can just move forward as we had intended to do, bring our, say we are interested in this land and we'll go ahead and move forward. Is that how?
Those seem like the most sensible options.
I think they're the only two options.
Right, because we're not going to go against the right of, our advice of council, so.
But the, the part that confuses me is that the way it was presented was that if we choose not to purchase it, then the buyer will withdraw their offer. That makes no sense to me. I, I, I can't not move forward on that kind of a statement, because it, it basically just waives our rights, we're just giving it back.
Right. No, the town should not, should not waive its right.
Now, Kevin, what do you think?
You were saying, if we don't waive our rights, and the seller says they withdraw the offer, then if he goes to sell it in the future, the offer would have to come to us first.
Correct.
But it would be at a higher price.
Yes.
Or it might be at a higher price, but likely.
But he could withdraw his office at this point at any given time right now, moving forward, and it would, would stop us from buying the property?
The board does not have to accept withdrawing the offer. We have a bona fide offer in hand that we're entitled to match, and that's a decision for the select board to make.
We have the ability to act.
Right.
Based on the information we have, and we have nothing in our hands that says otherwise.
Correct.
That's the dilemma.
Can we hear?
What do you recommend?
I, I'm wondering, let's hear from.
Sue, yeah.
Sue?
Good evening, thank you. Sue Jacobson, the Affordable Housing Director. I, I would just add a couple of things. Our board has voted to move forward with this property. The initial letter that we saw indicated that this property was going to be sold and a 40B project was going to be proposed, or a single-family development. That area, as we all know, is getting two significantly large projects of 40B, and the trust felt strongly that it was important to not have that area be burdened with a third 40B. And we did meet with our conservation agent to get, obviously, it's, it's not in writing, but she did take a ride out there and she did look at the property. It is, there are areas that are wet. She indicated that she thought we could potentially do two, maybe three lots that we could get there. We've met with conservation, they've indicated that they would like part of the land restricted, would have a conservation restriction. And while I'm mindful of Mr. Stahl's comments tonight, I think that the trust has the responsibility to represent all and do what's best for all of our residents, and I would request that the board move forward with, Jim has, Jim has explained it very exquisitely, and there's not a lot of, you know, there's not a lot of choices. The other concern that I might mention is, you know, we all, we, we are all aware of an election coming up next week, and potentially, there could be changes in boards, and what I don't want to see happen is maybe we have somebody that feels differently, so, or doesn't have all of the information within the time, you know, it's a, it's 120 days, but I think we're already 70 days in, so it would be very difficult if we did have a new board makeup to kind of bring that person up to speed, and certainly, they wouldn't have the institutional knowledge of the private, prior to sales that Jim spoke about with these properties. So, again, I respectfully ask that the board vote.
Okay.
So, the only two choices we have is to waive, which we shouldn't do, because that would just give us a first right refusal, could sell it to anybody. And the second thing is to act on it now and agree to purchase it.
No, there's a third choice, we could wait.
Well, waiving, waiving, I think, is not on the table.
Right, yes.
So, we're not going to wait.
So we have two choices. We can act on it this evening, as we have the right to do, or we can defer it. And we have to make sure that, that, when I say defer it, we just don't do a vote this evening. That's all, that's all I'm saying, is that we just don't act on it this evening, and act on it at a later date, being mindful that we're on a clock.
But there's, if we wait, I'm sorry to jump in.
No, go ahead.
The way I understand it, if we wait, there's a possibility that the offer will then be withdrawn and will no longer be available to us.
No.
No, he clarified that.
I, I, it's my opinion that if the offer is subsequently withdrawn, you've already been presented with a bona fide offer within the meaning of the statute, that you, you would, you'd be consenting in, in his withdrawing of the.
That was a question I had, too. I wondered if it had been withdrawn, if we deferred, but what you're saying is that the offer is the offer, and.
The offer is the offer. Waiting doesn't have, doesn't have a risk to us, but it doesn't have an advantage, like, what is the, what, what would be the possible things that could happen between now and the next meeting? There's no, there's no point to waiting.
Transparent, I think the only thing is you can speak with the, with the gentleman and see, that's the only thing.
But that's a good point. You're right. I, you think, I agree with what you just said, I hadn't thought of it that way. Nothing changes in waiting. You know, the offer will still be there, the offer doesn't change, and the decision remains the same. There is no change.
Right.
So even if that purchase were withdrawn, our offer remains the same. Our set of conditions that we have to decide on have not changed. So deferring doesn't change anything. There's nothing that will alter the decision.
There's no risk in waiting, because there's no risk that it will be withdrawn or some, this opportunity wouldn't become avail, wouldn't be available any longer.
Correct.
So there's no risk in waiting. So then the only advantage in waiting would be to have an opportunity to understand further what the situation is. I'm not sure.
The only thing I would add, the, the risk, I think Sue just said, I mean, there's a risk in change of composition of boards and etc., so I would let what Sue just say speak for that. I think that's the risk that you guys have.
Well, I, I think, actually, we really have only two decisions. I, I, based on what, you help me if I stray on this. Nothing is going to change the agreement that is before us, no matter what. It will not change. Whether we wait, defer, other information comes in, nothing changes. It is the same decision. So we really only have two decisions. We either exercise it or we waive it. That's it. Those are the, the only two decisions that we're going to have before us at any point in time. That will not change.
I think so, and I think that.
Is that wrong?
No.
Okay.
As much as I want to bring humanity to the situation, we have boards that have invested time and energy and intention based on something that was brought to us that we didn't, we didn't, we didn't look for it, or it came to us. And so we said, let's explore it, and we invested time with council, time with boards, and, and have made a decision. So I think our boards are saying they're interested in the property, and I'm willing to make a decision this evening.
What was your opinion?
I, I feel it's kind of a tough decision. I, I do feel a little bit, the way he, he presented it with his emotions and how he was under the medical, but I don't think we really have a choice, that we have to move forward.
It's not an open conversation, sir. I'm sorry. Okay.
Yeah, we, I feel like, like, we didn't pick the price, we didn't pick, the opportunity came to us according to a, a procedure that's determined by law, and, and we've invested time and energy, and we're ready, I think we're, it's very difficult, because I'm very moved, I'm very moved.
Well, I, I mean, I, the only thing, I, I think if we wait, basically, we're waiving, is kind of the way I look at it. I mean, I think that's, that's the only alternative, as I see it. I know we're not formally doing that, I, I understand, but I guess this is where I'm struggling. Nothing changes. No matter what else happens in the arrangement between the parties, it doesn't change anything that is before us.
Correct.
Now, we could change, the board could change.
Well, we could change in body, but the only decision we would make would be to waive it.
Which we're not going to make that decision.
I mean, that's the only alternative decision. There is no third decision. So we either purchase it or we don't. That's the way, that's really, unless I'm missing it, because it was such a unique set of circumstances where, you know, that I'd not personally experienced before. That's why I'm glad you're here this evening. And I didn't know what impact, if something changed between the two parties, what impact that might have on us, but, but the essence of what you're saying is, nothing changes. The deal is before us as presented, and anything that comes in after the fact is not relevant to our decision.
Correct.
Within that 120 days.
Yes, within the, within the statutory timeframe. You know, the purpose of waiting would be to hear more information, but it's not going to change the.
But hearing more information leaves us still with only one of two decisions.
Correct.
Buy or waive.
Yes. Yes.
That doesn't change.
Correct.
And that's what I guess I needed clarity on, because I, I didn't know if any after-the-fact decisions came before us might impact that. Apparently, it does not.
Sorry?
You're to my left, Mr. Roach.
Well, that was my question, I, that was my question, too, so may I say it out loud?
Yeah, I think you guys need to have all the information.
Sure. Right, so if we choose to wait, one risk is he could withdraw the offer.
The statute doesn't provide a, doesn't contemplate withdrawing of the offer. It's whether or not you'd want to accept the withdrawal.
Yes.
And reserve your rights in the future.
So it still is there?
Yes.
All right, so the question, I think, that in my mind is, do we think that waiting, do we think that waiting, and we take opportunities to meet with this young man and, and have those conversations, do we think there's things that we are going to learn that are going to make us overrule the recommendation of these boards and the Conservation Commission and Affordable Housing? And also, I think we need to consider the abutting, the abutting, the neighbors who could be potentially impacted if we chose to wait on the offer. Well, there's no risk in waiting.
Kevin? Now, if we wait, he withdraws the offer, then he decides to sell it, two years later, the price could be double what it is now?
Let me clarify one thing. This is key, no.
It's okay, it's okay, it's confusing, believe me, it's confusing.
This is the key part. It's not the withdrawal of the offer, right? He technically can do a withdrawal notice of intent, right? And then the board can consider to accept that. Now, if you play that out, based on your question, if the board did do that, he could then potentially negotiate a better offer at a higher amount, but then it would still come back to the board, the consideration of the right of first refusal. Now, if I was in the seat of Affordable Housing Trust, I might say, you know, you know, they have a cap on where they can purchase property, too, right? So there's a lot of factors that go in there. In terms of, it's just whether the board considers taking time to allow him to withdraw his notice of intent, that's what you can consider in the future. But there's risk to that, too, right?
But would we accept?
And I think we just have to be transparent about that.
Right.
So perhaps something we need to debate is if he did withdraw, would we accept the withdrawal?
Right, exactly.
So that's, that's something we could consider right now, right? If he did withdraw the offer, would we accept the withdrawal? Or do we say this came to us in a, like, this came to us in a, in a procedural way, in the way that was set up by bylaws and whatever, and our boards have put the time and energy into it, that their recommendation is it would be good for the town to own this land, and, and we should buy the land? I'm not, I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud right now, so bear with me, but I don't know if I would be interested in accepting the withdrawal.
Knowing that it, it could come back at a much higher price in the future.
There's, that's a variable, yes, because then it wouldn't be an opportunity, but, but also knowing that our boards have come to us, Conservation and Affordable Housing say, we want this land, we've invested time and energy. I'm super conflicted, as you can hear, I'm super conflicted, because I genuinely have compassion for the story, and I believe that the story is real. Like, I don't have any doubts in the story, but I feel like this is a, a real opportunity for our town, and our boards have, have spoken.
I, I too am conflicted, because I, you know, we're, we're here to help people, but we're also here to represent the community. And the part that I, and I, this is all speculative on my part, but I, I understand that, I think the gentleman made it very clear that he feels that the property that he so stated is worth more than what the sale is now taking place. So that tells me that there is an intent that if, if we were to waive it or withdraw, well, not waive it, but accept a withdrawal, let me put it that way, that the property will come back on sale, without question, and that it will be at a higher price. And we'll be back at this table, making the same decision, and paying a higher price.
Or not being able.
That's how, I, I could be wrong, but that's the scenario I see.
Or not being able to pay the higher price.
Well, it'll be a higher price. Either we choose to pay it or not is up to us, but I mean, yeah.
Or the resources of Affordable Housing.
Yeah. Yep. I mean, I could be wrong, but I mean, that's what I'm hearing and seeing.
If he, he's not obligated to market the property if he withdraws his offer?
Right. Then it's okay. You know, it stays where it is. But anytime, at any point in the future, that it is sold, that will come before this board again to exercise that option.
Correct.
Okay. So where are we? Kevin, what is your?
We're between a rock and a hard place.
We have only two decisions. We have a defer decision. We're not waiving. We're either going to defer a decision, or we're going to vote to exercise. What is your pleasure?
Like you said, it's a real tough decision, but it came to us with the price. And I hate to say, no, then three years down the road, it goes up three times as much, and we can't afford it, and we don't get it, just because.
So what's the, what's the, what's the simple answer to that?
I make the motion we move forward.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this, which there can very well be? Ada, anything?
I, I think this is the right thing for the town. And I think that that's what we have to do in this moment, is what's the right thing for the town. And I think I'm super conflicted by it, and I feel apologetic about it. But we didn't set the price. We didn't, we didn't create the circumstance. And so I think we need to do what's right by the town. And I think, I think moving forward is what's right for the town.
Any further comments? All right. There's a motion to exercise the option. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous.
I'm sorry.
With regret, I might add.
It is with regret. It's with so much angst and genuine angst.
But I do feel conflicted.
I want you to sleep good tonight. You did exactly what I would do for the community. I honestly believe that.
Thank you for understanding.
You leave here with our very best wishes. And if the town can support you on your journey in any way, you let us know.
I hope you, I hope you, I hope you heard our sincere compassion on this.
I did. You guys are amazing. I just want to say, if I was able to speak, I was just going to say that we have a 1756 farm. And basically, my family, I found out a little later, is hoping to keep a part of this pond for conservation efforts related to the farm, which, which would have no impact on the sales price or potentially the development. But I would want to obviously make sure that you.
I'm sure we, yes, please, come, come.
So if you reach out to me, I give you my contact information. I think the trust would be, I don't want to speak on their behalf, but we are probably going to be restricting part of this for conservation land. I think that's something we could absolutely work with.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
I also want to thank you for being, you approached me today about noon time and brought that letter. And you were incredibly gracious. You have been incredibly gracious this evening. I'm sorry for the emotions that you've had to go through with this, but thank you for being as gracious as you have been.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next agenda item on the board's agenda is to discuss whether to recommend the purchase of electronic sign with the Fire Station project funds. As Donna mentioned in public comment, this has been something that has been discussed by several community members. I know Kevin has expressed some interest in this as well. So in the board's packet, I gave you some information from our OPM. What we do know is that the sign, this electronic sign, gives you some ballpark figures to understand what this potential project could be. So the consideration for the board is whether they want to recommend to the Fire Station Building Committee to utilize some of the funds that they have. The Fire Station Building Committee is, we are doing pretty well with contingency. We plan on returning a sizable amount to the taxpayers. So we're proud of that. So we would potentially be looking to use about $100,000, around there. The OPM did say it might be a little less than that, but I'm just using conservative figure of $100,000. And I know board members have asked what impact that would be.
Thank you.
On taxpayers potentially, and that's about $20 for the year. So just want to give that information for the board. We don't really have nitty gritty details on the electronic sign, but I know, you know, board members have talked about it, communities talked about it. So it's something we want to present to the board.
Kevin, I'm going to let, turn to you to talk about this, because I know this has been a passion of yours.
Yep.
And so there is, it's an interesting question, because, you know, it's certainly something that would be of value to the community, but it's also taking money back out of the taxpayers' pocket to do it. So I'm going to turn it to you, your view, because this is one of your passions.
Okay. Well, I feel that, well, we do have the money coming back from the fire station. It is, if it is not rejected.
Thank you. Excuse me, Kevin. I apologize. I just wanted to say thank you. Take care.
Thank you. If it's, I realize it is still an expense. If money's not coming back, it is. But like you said, it's probably additional $20 to the taxpayers. But I think it has a significant value to keep the people informed. If people talk about transparency, this is more transparent, informing everybody of upcoming events. And I think with the new fire station, a new electronic digital sign that can control, and give messages about what's going on in the town, is a huge benefit to all the towns, all the residents of the town.
So now I'm conflicted, because you can't go against Donna. But so I, now this is part, Donna's putting me in the middle here. So I love the idea of the sign. So just for we're clear, the sign seems like an awesome idea. Having another way to get information out to people, I think, is awesome. I have real issue with taking it out of contingency funds. I think that the Fire Station Committee worked really hard to be able to give that money back to taxpayers. And I feel like, so it's $28 a family, but we're, we're making some big ass of our taxpayers. And we have heard loud and clear that people are, their taxes are important to them. So I think to say, well, we have, we have a million to give back to taxpayers, but we're going to hold back $100,000. I think if we want a sign, which I'm, I'll be, I'm all in on the sign. So I'm not at all opposed to the sign. But I think we need a fundraiser, or we need a grant, or we need a way to pay for this that isn't touching our taxpayers.
Can I just add one thing? The only thing that I would say, and I agree with everyone saying.
I haven't said anything yet.
Yeah. Well, what has been said so far is that this has been allocated already. So technically, this has already hit the taxpayer already.
I know.
I know. And I'm not trying to sway anything. I just want to make sure that's clear. I don't want to misinform the public. I don't want to make them think we're adding anything to it. That's what I care about. I don't want them to think we're adding anything to their bill at all.
No, but you're taking money away that would.
You absolutely are.
From the bill.
You absolutely are.
It is, it is an impact to the tax bill.
Because we were proud to be able to go back to our community and say, we are, we borrowed this much, but we're going to be able to relieve.
I'm not trying anything. I just want to make sure we're very clear. We're not adding anything to people's bill. I want to make sure of it clear, because you know what? It's coming to me, right? That email is coming to me first.
And so the sign is a really good idea. The sign is a good idea. I like the sign.
I agree.
I like the idea of the sign very, very much. I'm just concerned about setting the precedent of saying, oh, we've got this contingency money, and we could do this, and we could do this, and we could do this. And I, the idea of using the contingency money for something that wasn't intended, originally intended, makes me uncomfortable. And maybe that's, maybe you could talk me out of that, but.
Well, I agree with both of you. How's that for a cop out? I really agree with you that the sign would be great. I know, we have this little gazebo thing out here that the planning board put together like 30 years ago, that was supposed to be informational. And, you know, I think Donna put it eloquently, you know, three people could stand under there and not get wet. I mean, that's the extent of it. But, but I too, I too, I agree with Anita. I mean, we have some very difficult financial decisions to make. And I, while we're not adding to the tax base, we're taking money away that would reduce the tax base. And that was the whole premise of the return of the contingency funds. I would love to see a sign there. I really would. But I do think there are other ways that we can find $75,000 or $80,000 over time to make that happen. So I'm troubled by taking it out of contingency as well.
We have our chief here.
Chief, did you want to comment on anything? Careful now.
Just a really quick comment. I, I too am, I'm very proud of the work that the building committee has done. And to be able to come to the town and say, we're, we have this much money to give back and reduce that tax bill. So I'm very much in favor of that. But I do want to just say that the sign actually is something that was in the early stages of the project that we cut out as a cost-saving measure. So it was actually in the project originally, and it was taken out. So I just wanted to make, make that, that clear as well, is that it, there was provision initially for them, as we went through the different iterations of the project, it got taken out as a, as a means to, to save money.
But as you said, it was taken out as a cost-saving measure.
And I guess at that given point, the committee, the building, the Fire Department Building Committee chose to take it out. So in my opinion, we shouldn't vote to put it back in.
I agree.
They could vote to put it back in.
Well, evidently, they don't want to, though.
That's, the way you worded that was super interesting. I know, poor Donna. I know, Donna, I love you so much. You know I love you so much.
What could have happened if I didn't ask?
I know. Well, it was a good ask. It's important. I think it's an important thing. But you're right, they chose to take it out, and we shouldn't overrule them. That was an elegant way to look at it. And I agree with you, even though now we're.
I just, I just.
I mean, I, I'd like the sign there, but they chose to take it out. So I, we shouldn't override them to put it back in, because we voted for them to be on the committee and make the decision. So.
I agree.
Yep. And I just restate, I guess, pretty much what you said, Anita. I just, when we have funds coming back that are for a specific purpose, to reduce the burden on taxpayers, however little or much it may be, I don't want to do anything to change that. It becomes very arbitrary for us to spend money we really don't have. And I am not in favor of that at all.
But we'll find another way, Donna.
I would love to see it there. I really would. And I know it's your passion. And it's mine too, in that regard, but I.
We'll find a way to get it funded.
I like that. And then the next question, when we get the funding, is we'll talk about who, how, we decide what goes up there. But that's a down-the-road conversation.
So we're in agreement?
Yes.
We're in agreement.
And we got there the right way.
Yeah.
Good discussion. Thank you.
It was a good discussion.
It was. Yep.
Proud of this board.
All right. The next agenda item is to consider the approval of allocation of opioid abatement funds. In the board's packet, there's two applications we received. Just a quick heads up, so now you're going to have a difficult decision. There's only $13,000 available to appropriate. You have requests of $23,000, although one, a social worker, $8,789, that's from Norfolk Public Schools. And then you have a request of $6,000 from KP, the Healthy KP Substance Use Prevention Coalition. I don't know if a representative is there from either group.
I can speak to the KP.
So we have third.
She is. Karen is here. I spoke with her today. Karen is representing the Healthy KP.
So just to go over the numbers again, we have $13,000 to spend.
Correct.
Okay. And the Norfolk Public Schools wanted eight?
$8,789 to help fund a social worker. And the Healthy KP wanted $6,000 for a couple of initiatives. A few initiatives.
And we have 13?
Yeah, we have 13.
Even?
Basically, nine and four.
Question just on the 87 and 90 for the Norfolk Public Schools, is that a salaried number?
Yes. It's like 0.1 of the social worker.
Okay. So it's a firm number. All right. And that.
Context, when the board.
We're talking about $1,700 request, more than we have.
Yeah. We did do, so we've never received a request from Healthy KP before. So the board has never allocated to Healthy KP. MPS last year, in '24, the board allocated $7,000, just FYI.
Well, we have a representative from Healthy KP, and I'd love to hear from it, although I know it.
My name is Karen Becker, and I'm the new Healthy KP Program Director. So I actually, ironically, work with Dot Pearl, who's the Wellness Director, in help to put in the other application that you're speaking of for the position in Norfolk. So I work for a drug-free, it's a drug-free community federally granted program that serves the KP community. So we're working to reduce substance use rates among youth in the KP community. The grant, our fiscal agent, is actually KP District. So we work very closely with the schools. So the application that I put forward presented a few different projects in the community that would affect students at the elementary, middle school, and high school levels, and children who live in Norfolk. I know a little about the application that Dot put forward along with the Norfolk School. And I understand that what that position also supports, I can tell you, these, some of these programs would still be able to be supported if we, if we were able to receive reduced funding too. So what we asked for, you know, kind of supplements what we have within our budget. But if I can answer any questions about any of the programming, I can do that for you.
I'm going to, I'm very familiar with the program that Karen's talking about. And it's been a phenomenal program that has been going on up at KP and really gaining momentum. And they've done some wonderful, wonderful work. And a strong, strong supporter, because I'm on the school committee, so I know intimately is what they're doing. So in fairness of that, because of that relationship, I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion and from this vote.
Okay.
Because I have a bias.
I'm not sure that's necessary, but.
But I'm going to do it anyway.
And so I want to review the numbers. And then I have a question for you, Karen, so please don't go away. So we have $13,000. The Norfolk Public Schools has asked for a little less than nine.
Yes.
And KP is asking for six.
Correct.
So there is a possibility we could do the little less than nine, and then still give KP $4,000. Karen, so on the, on the $6,000 for those three projects that are in the application, do those, does that $6,000 fully fund those three projects, or is it a partial funding of those three projects?
So it would be a partial funding. But again, we can kind of tweak, you know, some of that programming to, the largest pool of money there you can see is me working with Dot and possibly even the social worker, that that other position would fund to implement programming for the schools in the town. So it can be adjusted. And just to give you a background, the grant that I'm working off of, it's a $125,000 grant federally funded each year that supports my position benefits and other expenses with the grant. And we're coming up onto five years of that funding. And as of tomorrow, hopefully, I'll be reapplying for five more years. It's much more competitive this year, but hoping that we get the funding too.
So first of all, thank you for your work. It's, it's really important for our young people. And thank you very much. And I feel strongly in the value of the program. When I was reading over your grant, when it asked for measurable outcomes, it talked about that there's a survey measuring, and that survey's done every two years. I would love, at a future time, to have you come to the board and share some of that data with our board. I think that that would be valuable for our community to hear that. Because I think that.
I would love to do that. I just did something with Plainville, very similar when the billboard went up. So, and I'm very proud of the data we're looking at. There have been significant decreases of substance use in our community.
So I think what I'm going to recommend, and then we can talk about it, but I would love to fully fund the Norfolk Public Schools guidance position. I think that's absolutely critical. And I feel, I know that we did the best we could for the schools, but I really feel like we should fully fund the guidance counselor position, and then give $4,000 to this organization, give her the partial funding.
From what I'm hearing from Karen, she should have agreed with you as well.
I think so. I think so. So give her the partial funding, and then with the understanding, Karen, that we want to support your, the work that your organization is doing. And in the future, we hope that we're able to better support you at a fuller level.
That sounds wonderful. And that's my vision, to do more work with the municipalities too, and see what would help your community too. Thank you very much for your support.
And we look forward to having you come to the board and share some of that data with us and with our community. I think that there's value for all of us in seeing that.
Great. Thank you.
I will recuse from the vote, but I do want to say I have seen the data. And they have done phenomenal work. Absolutely phenomenal work. Karen, your folks, and the way you've involved the kids, which you did not speak to, and when you do come before the board, I encourage you to really bring that up, because the involvement of the children is really what's made this a phenomenal program. I shouldn't call them children, the kids, the high school kids. It's been great.
It's true. It's true. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Do you want to make a motion? I'll go ahead. So I move that we approve the allocation of $8,000 and change.
$8,789. You're doing the full amount?
The full amount to Norfolk.
$789.
$8,789 to the Norfolk Public Schools for. $8,789 to the Norfolk Public Schools for the partial guidance counselor position, and then $4,000 additional dollars to this amazing program at the King Philip High School and Middle School.
And I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I am accused.
Thank, oh, go ahead.
No, I think you wanted to thank Karen.
I did. Thank you, Karen.
Karen, thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you again.
Thank you all for your service. I look forward to connecting with you soon.
I'd like that very much. Thank you.
Sorry I couldn't vote.
Oh, thank you for your kind words and support.
You guys, it's been one of the most impressive programs I've seen in a long time. You guys are doing great work.
All right. Keep your fingers crossed. We'll get five more years of funding.
We'd like that.
We hope.
One last quick thing that I need the board to sort of give suggestion on. We've typically waited for Fall Town Meeting to allocate opioid stabilization funds. I'm gonna recommend to the board, we have $61,000 available to us, and I talked with Karen about this now. I might recommend that we do a transfer at this town meeting, maybe allocate $40,000, and then you'll be able to fund this, we can fund further application process on a rolling basis as we've typically done, rather than wait until the fall. So if you guys are comfortable with that, we can put that as a budget transfer at May Town Meeting.
I don't want to steal the line, because I remember when one of my predecessors, Mr. Calcutt, made the comment, "Get this money out of here as fast as you can and get it out working in the community."
Yeah, I agree.
And he was right on, so I completely agree.
All right, simple.
Make it happen.
We will do that. I'm gonna be very quick on this, because I know we had staff waiting for one of these items. Another bit of good news here, having the board consider a revised contract with Select Energy for the Norfolk Police Roof PPA Project. If the board remembers, this project was gonna save the town some substantial amount of funds on electricity costs, so a bit of good news. These are sort of revised contracts, but the good news is that when we discussed this, we wanted to move quickly because we were hopefully getting to a more beneficial incentive block, and we were able to get in there, just barely. So now by doing that, the town is gonna realize up to almost $100,000 of additional savings than what was anticipated. So this is just making sure we do these amended contracts, etc. It's to the benefit of the town.
It's a no-brainer.
Yes.
So good news.
It is good news, and it's not only good news, but it's good work on your part. So it's very good work for our community, our town, and so, thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the revised contract with Select Energy for the Norfolk Police Roof PPA Project.
If you just do me authorize...
And I authorize the town administrator to execute these documents on behalf of the town.
I second the motion.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you for your work, Justin, on that. It really made a difference for us. Thank you.
I'd just like to recommend to the board, the next topic I know is gonna have a little bit of time, and the next two topics are very quick topics. The appointment to the associate member of the Energy Committee, and the bill abatement should not, these are fairly quick discussions.
Yes.
Where I suspect number 12 will not be a quick discussion. So if...
The board is agreeable?
Fine.
Let's just move those two items up quickly.
Okay.
And if that's agreeable. So we will go to appoint Nathan, I hope I'm pronouncing it, Veercon? Is that correct? Veercon? Have I...
No.
Am I right?
That's correct.
Thanks, Andy. As an associate member to the Energy Committee, term expiring June 30 of 2025. Is Nathan here this evening?
No.
He was not able to make it. He had a meeting.
Okay.
Andy's here on his behalf.
Andy, do you want to say a very brief promise? I know that's a tough one, Andy. I know it's tough.
Yeah, with just some theory behind pointing him as an associate member, since he's still in college, he's got another two years. He's doing work-study in Franklin for a company that's working on some high-tech NASA stuff, which I don't even fully understand. He's an electrical engineer at URI. He gets all the nuts and bolts and electrons, but what he needs to understand is how the, I'll call it, the stuff behind the rebates, the technology, and how that all gets integrated. I think we spoke to him for about 30 minutes, and he just kept asking questions, and usually you're the one that's asking him questions, but he's asking you questions, so that was a good sign. So we're recommending him as an associate member, and the simple reason why associate member is because he may not be able to make meetings, and we've stressed to him that his schoolwork is more important than this stuff, so.
Questions, anybody?
No.
All right.
I move that we approve the appointment of Nathan Veercon as an associate member to the Energy Committee with a term expiration of June 30, 2025.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Andy.
And let's get this one off real quick, too.
The abatement, the board has a memorandum from Blair regarding this. My math is essentially, I'm not gonna go into the reasoning. The board has that in the package. It's in the packet. It's a total abatement of $3,006.12. It's about, it's $804.87 for 8 Malcolm Street, and then $2,222.42 for 10 Village Green. DPW supporting this abatement typically.
And the documentation was all in there? Everybody comfortable with it?
Yes.
Yep. Can I just make one? Very, so fast. I just felt like when I read through the documentation, it made me proud that we're in a community that, these are two different unique situations, and I thought they were handled nicely, and I'm super pleased to, so I'll move to abate a water bill for 8 Malcolm Street and 10 Village Green.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thanks for moving that up. All right. Justin?
Yes. So, the next agenda item, I just want to clarify, we, the board, and this is in the board's packet, we received a formal request for local water supply emergency declaration. That's the documentation the town received from a resident, so that's what we put in the agenda. I asked staff, I asked our DPW, our fire, and Caitlin from Conservation Commission to be here, just to speak about that request, so the town is aware of what we can and can't do there. And also, as further information, when we had this presented at a previous board meeting, the board asked us to reach out to Franklin, and we didn't. We have said, I met with the town manager in Franklin Monday. We are going to have a meeting. He's agreed to have a meeting with his team, the DPW director, and a member of their council, and we're gonna have a member of our select board, our DPW team, and myself meet with them in two weeks. So we are proactively working towards that, and I just want to give you a little bit of background from our staff, and then open it up for the board if you have any questions, just so we can understand what a supply emergency declaration actually entails to the pond. So I think I'm gonna have police, excuse me, not police. It was on my mind, right? I'll have fire chief quickly come in and just talk about public safety aspect of it, because it's been implied that pond has public safety sort of impact, so I'll have chief do that.
Welcome, chief.
For me, it's really brief. We were made aware of the situation probably a few weeks ago. After we were made aware, I went out and looked at our GS mapping with our hydrant locations, and, you know, that, the issue with the pond does not create a public safety issue. We have 13 hydrants in total circumference around that area, and we looked pretty intently. Every house in that area has a hydrant within 1,000 feet, if not two. So we have adequate primary and secondary water supply, water sources in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then I'm gonna have Barry, Blair's on vacation, just speak to DPW in what, in terms of our supply, what a water supply emergency declaration entails there.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you remember, we were actually in last year upgrading our bylaw for the water conservation.
I remember it well.
So this ties right in. So DPW can only declare a state of water emergency on the town's water system. So lakes, ponds, things like that don't fall under purview of the DPW.
Simple.
Simple.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barry.
And then I have Caitlin just speak in terms of the Conservation Commission, and, you know, she can give a little more historical background. I think there are, you know, considerations to have here on the conservation side, so Caitlin will give a little background there. Also, she did give some historical graphs of the pond previously, but I'll toss it to Caitlin for this one.
So as you all know, this issue kind of started in the mid-'60s when well four, Franklin's well four was kicked online. And as you can see from the aerial photographs that I provided, there definitely was a noticeable decrease in the pond's elevation after that well was kicked on. Unfortunately, the mid-'60s, that predates the Wellands Protection Act, it predates the Norfolk Wellands Protection Bylaw. So as far as purview of the Conservation Commission, there isn't any in this case. The town has definitely looked into this quite extensively. There's a lot of files on record that I've reviewed. There have been numerous studies done. I believe the first one in 1967, the latest being 2023, about this issue. It seems that Franklin is pretty well aware of the issue and the impacts of their well four and well five on the pond. And as of the latest study in 2023, essentially, there are, a link has been established by the USGS, United States Geological Service. However, additional engineering and analysis needs to be conducted before anything can really be implemented or recommended on how to fix this issue.
Great. Thank you.
And I think you, now, go to work first.
Yeah, well, I just want to ask a question. So there isn't, the studies that are out there don't have a solution?
The 2023 study kind of looked at three different scenarios. One would be, the first scenario was increasing the discharge from well four and five to their maximum allotted withdrawal. Scenario two dealt with reducing it to a third. And the third scenario looked at whether or not the system could handle the maximum need for the town of Franklin. And essentially, the results were that the system couldn't, the capacity of the system cannot meet the increased demand during some months of the year. So essentially, from what I understand, the summer months are the most heavily, obviously, the water demand is most heavy in the summer months, and that's when Kingsbury Pond typically sees the lowest elevations. So I think that's what really ties into the need for more analysis before anything can be recommended.
And there's a 48-page report that goes along with this?
I think it's more, I think it was like 120.
Well, I only saw 48. But anyway, thank you.
And thank you for preparing and hanging in there, because it's late night, so, thank you.
So one of the things that, you know, obviously, I defer to our professionals that we have here, you know, this situation definitely has been exacerbated by the drought conditions that we've been in, right? Aquifer hasn't been able to be replenished. So there is an issue there, right? And I think we acknowledge that. A water emergency doesn't address that issue. There's also, Barry, correct me if I'm wrong, there's Norfolk residents with private wells that draw from the pond, and we don't have an ability to address that. But I would say this, in terms of the direction that we've heard from residents and from the board, what they've told us is, we want to see if there is action that we can do. And what we're doing is we're trying to collaborate with Franklin, and the fact that we're having a meeting, see if they can reduce their draw there. Jamie and I had a productive discussion on Monday. I think bringing all our professionals and our team together to try and collaborate rather than be adversarial might be more productive. I would say, let us have that meeting and see if that is productive. And then, after that, then the board can consider doing any further actions. That would be my recommendation. That seems to be the recommendation of the team that we have here. Now we leave it to you.
I just want to make a couple of comments on this, because I have received numerous emails, some quite unpleasant, and there have been things posted and stated that are just plain false. False. And I have responded to these diligently, and I've said, we have done our homework on this. We have not sat back and just lingered and ignored this. It is just not true. And we have looked into the various options and what we can and can't do. And I've told some of the residents, we can't do a water emergency. It has no, we can't do it. You've heard it tonight from people that have more authority on this than I do. We have responded to this. The only way to get at this is communication. And to walk into somebody and hit them in the mouth and think he's gonna respond to us, it doesn't work. Never has. Never has. And so we initiated immediately, trying to make contact with Franklin. We know that four and five are causing a problem, and we want to find a solution, but we got a partner to find it. That's the only way we can work through this. And we've said that all along, but it has been troubling to me that residents have not listened and drawn conclusions that are not based on fact. We've tried to communicate that fact. We have not ignored this from the day we've learned about it. This is a new issue, this is not a new issue to me. I went through this back in the late teens, and we got the same answers. And those of you that were there, remember that. So, I mean, we want to find a solution. We're going the only way that we know that works. The alternatives that have been posted and saying we're not doing anything are just unfair, because that is not the case. And we're doing our best, and I, hopefully, these conversations, I think Ms. Mecklenburg is most likely gonna be the one that will be working with Franklin. She'll be chair after the election, as we rotate through the process. We're confident they're willing to talk with us. They're willing to sit down and have a discussion. You know, they're business partners with us in many respects. There's nobody here that had anything to do with what caused this problem to start with. Nobody. You know, I can't say I was six years old, but I wasn't eligible to vote. You know, we're trying to do the right thing, and I wish you would just have a little bit of patience with us and understand, because we've responded to all of your communications. I know I have. And you're hearing the same thing. I said, we can't do it. It doesn't work. And so, be part of a solution with us. Don't be part of the problem. I guess that's what I'm saying. We're not gonna get into a debate. We're not. Not tonight.
I don't want a debate.
Nope.
I want...
Not right now.
Five seconds for agreement.
Nope, not right now. Anita?
So I also have been on Facebook, and so I wrote a statement, so I wanted to put my thoughts together and not say something that was inappropriate, because really good things have happened. So on April 1st, which I just want to say was 28 days ago, 28 days ago, John came to the board and used public comment to bring our attention to the dropping water levels of Kingsbury Pond. We listened. We listened that night. Blair Crane, our DPW director, happened to be on the agenda, and I asked him and the town administrator at the very same meeting, look into this. So John did a public service. He brought it to the attention of the board. At the very same meeting, we asked our experts to look into this. In terms of governments, it's guided by multitudes of laws, regulations, overlapping responsibilities, budgets, stretched thin staff. This is lightning fast. At the same meeting, we're looking into it, and at the very same meeting, it was brought forward. The board acted. My beautiful grandson, who lives with us right now, would say, vroom, vroom. Like, that was fast. Our town administrator and our DPW director followed up with Franklin on the issue, and a group meeting is already scheduled. It's on my calendar. It's already scheduled. I personally asked Justin that it be on today's agenda so that we could share back, and he said Jim already took care of that, and Jim made sure it was on the agenda, because your board is working for you. Your board wants what's right for this pond. Every single one's sitting right here. In the very short time between the meetings, false, hurtful, and repeated accusations are being posted on Facebook claiming that we lack caring, that we lack transparency, and that we are lacking action from this board. I'm assuming that the people posting those things are good people. So all I can think is that they believe you have to fight the government to get things done. So I just want to use this forum to remind the folks that in Norfolk, we're the government, right here. Anita, Jim, Kevin, we're the government, and we're real people. We're elected volunteers. We do not get paid. We're real people, and we're working here. We have other things to do, but we're here because we love our town. All three of us are here for that reason. While we're the executive branch, you're the government too. You're the legislative branch, because we have a town meeting form of government, and your voice matters, your vote matters. You're the government too. And so this year, we heard tonight, did we hear it tonight? We haven't heard it yet tonight. We're talking soon about a pre-town meeting Q&amp;A that we're setting up, because our community wanted more time and more information. We're looking into clickers for voting. How can we get more people and opportunity? We're looking into overflow rooms for families with young children to help people be involved in their community. And so we're working really hard to include you. We care about what you say. We are listening, and we want your interest, and we want your involvement. So tonight, I just wanted to share that the graphics were amazing, by the way, but the accusations on Facebook really hurt my feelings. Anita Mecklenburg, my feelings were hurt. This month alone, I've had over a dozen meetings with different folks, and thanks to the beautiful NCTV, I've also watched other meetings that I couldn't attend in person. I am not alone in this level of commitment. I am not alone in this level of commitment. It's not just Anita working this hard for her town. I spent hours preparing just for tonight's meeting. I'm retired. I have to check my calendar every morning to make sure what I need to do because of my commitment to this town. So as a point of clarification, in 1964, I was three. I was not involved in that decision that Franklin gave, we gave the land to Franklin, but every single person on this board is committed still to finding a solution. Unanimously, we want to find a solution to this problem. It is a historical and complicated problem, and it's going to take some time. It's not going to be something we can fix quickly. The facts are that it is Franklin's land. It is Franklin's well. We do not control either of these things. We cannot control those things. We can go in guns blazing, or we can have a conversation with our neighbors, and that's what we are choosing to do. We have spoken with council already and explored, even though we only found out 28 days ago, we have spoken with council already and explored next steps. So we have a plan if our conversations are not effective. But these are our neighbors, and if we can solve this in a non-adversarial way, it is in everyone's best benefit. So you spoke, we listened. We not only listened, but we acted. We've had the chief here. We've had so many people who have done so much work in a short amount of time. We did not act because of the threats and the hurtful accusations on Facebook. We acted because this board cares. Please continue to help us be the best we can. Without you, we would have never known. It's so important. Without you, we would have never known. So you help us be the best that we can be, and thank you for that. That's a genuine thank you. But please remember that we are the government, but we're real people. Let's continue to work together for Norfolk, our beautiful town. Thank you.
As you can tell, for some reason, this has become somewhat of an emotional issue for us, and I've been on this board, some may say, way too long, and it's very rare that I let anything get under my skin. It's kind of the old hockey player in me. For some reason, this one did because I immediately paid attention to this, immediately, and I responded to every communication, and I knew the answers. We knew the answers that you heard here tonight. We just didn't wait for tonight for them to come in and tell us these answers. We knew this, we knew the information. I've seen that 48-page, or it's 100, I've only seen 48-pages report. I was here back in the early, in the teens when this happened. I knew the history of this, and we paid immediate attention to this, immediate attention to this. But there's only so much that's within our control. I can't tell you how many people said, well, put on a water, you know, whatever, emergency water. We can't. And I said that, and apparently, nobody heard it. I mean, we're trying.
They heard it.
They ignored it.
We were lazy.
We're trying, and it was troubling to me. It was something that got under my skin, and I hate to have that happen. It bothers me to ever let that happen because we did everything we could do to try and get into the process to fix this. We know what's causing the problem. That report clearly states what's mostly causing the problem, but we can't turn the spigot off. Only Franklin can. So we're engaging in those conversations. We're optimistic. They're willing to talk with us. They didn't close the door, you know, and I'm optimistic. I mean, they're our neighbors. They know what's happening. They're not dumb. They're very smart folks. They know very well the impact this is having. So we're going to work on it. We're going to do our best to find a solution. Anita is going to take the lead on that. And, but please, you know, there'll be other situations like this. It's emotional to you folks. I know that. You live there. You see it every day. I get it. But give us the benefit of the doubt that we're not ignoring it because you don't hear something in 12 minutes. You know, people get mad. I'm an older generation. I'm old school, you know, and I still like to pick up the phone and talk to people. And people get mad because I don't answer a text within 12 minutes of when it was sent. You know, if I have my choice, I don't look at the phone all day. That would be my preference. But it isn't the real world, and I know that, so I try. But I, you know, call me. Pick up the phone and call. I've never not talked to anyone that called me about any issue. We're trying.
We're trying.
Anyway, enough, you may want to?
Okay, I'll chime in. I was born in 64, so I couldn't do much about it then. But I know it has gone to court several times over the Kingsbury Committee, took it to court and everything, and the judge each time says Franklin's drinking water is more important than a recreational pond. I know you suggested that we talk to Franklin and see if they will reduce it by 50 gallons a minute, and that's what we're going to try to do. We're going to try to have a meeting with them. Who knows? It could be one of the well, other wells are offline right now that we don't know about. That's what that meeting will find out about and everything else. But if you could, just put on Facebook. You came to the meeting, we're getting results, and be patient for the outcome in a couple of weeks. Like, these two people said, we're doing the best we can, and that's all we can do is ask for a meeting. They accept it. We have to wait for the meeting to occur, then we're going to go and see what happens.
We want to fix it. Yes, John, please.
I want to apologize for when I first came into this with the community that I'm working with.
Grab a mic.
Yeah. I've said that I. I said that I never did this before. I have no backend idea, and I didn't mean in any type of way after coming to this meeting. This is all I wanted to hear from day one. I don't want, or we don't want to be the problem. We want to help be in the solution. And the good thing is, I was kind of excited here, and maybe things went off the rails, but it wasn't done in a hurtful, harmful way, you know, and I apologize. All of us apologize for that. So it is 100% clear that you guys are on our side now, and, you know, we. The pond came up a little bit, and I just wanted to say, the phone call worked, and since 1964, it hasn't gone up when we've asked, so.
Well, let's move on. Let's move on, John. Thank you. I appreciate it. I think we all do. We're going to move on because we have a common goal. We share a common goal.
100%.
So we're on the same page.
Do the best we can.
We're going to do our best we can. That's a promise.
I apologize.
Not required. It's an emotional issue to you guys, and I understand that.
I wouldn't want that to happen. I didn't want that to happen, and I apologize.
Thank you.
We all apologize. Thank you for being on our side.
We were from day one.
I, we were from day one. Much water.
Well, I'd love to think that a phone call brought the pond up, but.
You know what? Listen, I was looking at it expecting.
I think you're pushing it on that one.
But I tied into the U.
So hopefully, it keeps going in that direction.
Listen, it went up, and there was no rain. This is the first time.
Maybe we should make a phone call every day and just see what happens.
I think that, you know, there's a common goal.
Yeah, there is.
I don't think Franklin wants to kill our pond.
No, they don't.
And I don't think Norfolk wants to do anything to Franklin. I know, but, you know, I think now in 2025, I think we can reach across and try to do this so that there's a balance.
All right, thank you. Thank you, John, for saying that. All right. And again, I somewhat apologize for getting a little emotional. That is unlike me.
Okay, we're all there.
Very unlike me. I don't think I've ever done it in 18 years, but it just.
We're going to have a nice meeting at the Eagle Brook, and we're going to discuss happinesses and.
Well, let's just hope we get some solutions.
And if you'd be nice, if you guys make another phone call and say, hey, you guys could give us that .218 of an inch.
We're meeting with them. We'll have that conversation.
We'll just hope for a bit more solutions.
There'll never be another question again from me.
No, 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 no. We're not saying that.
Your question was important.
John, we are not saying that.
We didn't know. Your question was important.
You need to, every citizen should bring issues to the board.
Yes.
All we're saying is, is that we hear those issues, and, you know, we can't communicate except in a posted meeting. We have restrictions under the law as to how we can work together. I can't go run over to her house and sit down and talk about this, or go down and while he's fixing my car, which he does regularly, you know, we can't talk about this. So this is the only opportunity where we, as a collective group, can have this discussion. We talked through Justin, and he communicates to each of us individually, but the system restricts us on how fast it, to you, you know, to you sitting there. It observes, you observe that we're not moving when in fact we are, but we're going the way we're required to go by law, which government has two speeds, slow and lethargic.
But not in this. In this, we've been very fast.
I'm so excited that we got a little bit of.
We're going to give it our best.
Just ask the guy, could you give us a little 1/8 of an inch? Because I saw it, because the kids are sticking the flags down, and the flags now are buried with a little bit of water, and we didn't have any rain to do that. So, you know, today was, it was a nice day looking at the flag, so hopefully, we can all keep it going together.
We're moving on. John, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me bring that forward. Where are we, sir?
The next one's you, Jim, and the board. It's town.
Oh, town administrator up there, yes. We all may want to chip in a little bit, but I just want to give people an update on this.
Thank you, everyone.
There goes the whole crowd. I think, as most of you know, Justin is moving on to bigger and better things and is taking over as town manager for the town of Bridgewater. I think probably each of us are going to want to speak personally to this, but I've had the pleasure of working with Justin for pretty close to three years. He has been outstanding. He has been, I have to say, I think I have a pretty high work ethic and can balance a lot of balls. I think you got me beat. You have been a really wonderful thing for the town, and you will be missed. That said, we have not ignored the fact that Justin is leaving. We've known it for a little bit of time, and did my best to talk him out of it and was unsuccessful. Not true. He needs to do what's in his best interest, and I think we're all supportive of that. But we have a plan in place. We are planning on bringing in an interim town administrator who is experienced in this area and has worked in other communities. We're in the process of working through that at this particular point in time. Justin is going to play point for us in making those arrangements, and we have not ignored it. We're not waiting for it to disappear because we'd like to have some, I guess I'd call it mutual opportunity to work together for the transition. We don't want to be left without help here. So with that, I'll, if I may, turn to Anita first.
Yeah, I don't have anything to say at this exact minute. I absolutely, 100% value the partnership we've had with Justin Kessin over Davis and wish him the very, very best, and I told him that he's not rid of us yet because his phone will be ringing as I say, what do you think about this? Or how do you want to do about that? But we've been really honored to work with him, and I'll say more when we get closer to the last meeting, but we do have a plan. We'll have an interim come in, and then we'll, we'll work with the interim to set up the plan, the hiring decisions. So we'll work, we'll do that process methodically, and you will be greatly missed, greatly missed.
Well, I will say a little bit more because I may or may not have an opportunity to do so.
Wax on.
Justin has been phenomenal to work with. You know, as chair, as Anita knows, because we rotate the chairs through the board, which is a good tradition that I hope will always be maintained because it's the right way to do it. I've worked very closely with Justin over the last year and enjoyed it very much. We've had some very thoughtful discussions over that time, and it's been amazing to me how many times I thought I had a bright idea, and he said, well, I've already done that. So I guess it wasn't as creative as I thought it was. But it's been a great experience, and I know you're going to do very, very well in Bridgewater. They're getting, you've got to work with nine of those people now. You think three are tough? Try nine. Good luck. It's a council system, so he's in for a treat, but I've thoroughly enjoyed working with you, and I want to be sure I have the public chance to say that. So you have been one of the best town ministers. I've worked with five town administrators in this town, and we've had good ones. Some, Jack Hathaway was a very good town administrator, but you're right there at the top of the list.
That means a lot.
So I thank you for that. We're going to miss you.
Definitely. That's, those are true words.
I'm going to see you again, so I'll say goodbye at the final.
There you go. That works. That's better for me, too.
But it is important that the community know that we're prepared for this.
Yes.
And that the board will move on, and they will have someone in place so that there'll be no break in the process, and it is someone that is very experienced in this area, does a lot of interims, has worked in an interim in a number of different towns, and things should work out just fine. Although it won't be Justin, unfortunately. All right.
All right. Next agenda, I don't know, Anita, if you want to take this one.
Anita, you want to talk about that one?
Absolutely.
Because that is your creative idea, and I think it's wonderful.
Well, it wasn't, people, different people in town said they felt like with a town meeting, that they liked town meeting, but they sometimes wanted more time to think about something as it came up, and they wanted a chance to ask people questions and have time to think and process. And so something other communities have done is had a pre-town meeting Q and A. I guess it's also happened, Jay was saying they've done that in Norfolk in the past. So on May 7th, from 6:00 to 7:30 in the King Philip Auditorium, King Philip Middle School Auditorium, we're going to have a pre-town meeting Q and A. Text about it went out for people who have signed up for text alerts, for savvy customers who have text alerts have gotten those.
It takes me off the list.
So we'll have it, we'll have it on our website, but there is, in the press release, it asks you to pre-submit any questions so we can be prepared. It is an hour and a half, and town meeting usually goes for, let's just say, more than that, and so it is only an hour and a half. So as much as we can have questions in advance, we're eager to answer your questions, so if you can submit them in advance, and then we'll try to make space for live questions as well. It, NCTV, who is amazing, will be filming it, so we'll make sure that we get it up for everybody to see on film who isn't able to be there in person. And so it's just one more way to try to answer folks' questions, give that space. Some people need time to think about it, so we want them to have that opportunity to hear the answers to their questions and then be able to think about it before their, things are coming up for a vote. So that will be happening on May 7th from 6:00 to 7:30 at the King Philip Middle School Auditorium.
Terrific. Kevin, Anita?
No, I think that's a, that's a great idea, and I think it's going to help make people much more informed about the decisions at the town meeting.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I think it is, too. We'll see if folks.
All right, you're up.
Yeah, and just one little thing to add to that is, on the town's website, we have on our news blast, a link for town meeting items. So there, obviously, people have, are going to be receiving the warrant soon, but you can electronically get documents there. You can see the budget. You can see the warrant. We have an interactive map for FEMA stuff, and as we get more information, we're going to put it there. So it's centralized right on our front page of our website, so you can get information there.
Excellent.
So we'll be updating as it goes.
What you have to do is scroll down a little bit. So you go onto the website, the homepage, and then just scroll down, and if you're having any difficulty accessing it or finding out, give Amanda a call, and we will walk[1617.23] we will walk you, walk you right through it to make sure you find out the information. We want you to be informed, and so please let us help you if there's any way that we can. Just scroll down a little bit on the homepage. It's right there.
Perfect. In terms of updates, I'm good right now.
Okay. We do have an executive session this evening. Anything from the board? Kevin?
No.
Anita?
I have a couple of random notes.
Go for it.
So first of all, our next meeting, I think, will be May 13th. Are we in agreement on that? Or do we need to discuss it? Is that a discussion?
I think, I'd wait till after the election, just because you don't know someone's calendar.
I think we need, the only thing that we have is with two members...
You said it that night.
Yeah, is that we may have to have a meeting before town meeting because there might be one item that might be outstanding. So if the board is amiable to it, we'd like to have a meeting May 13th and in place. We typically have a meeting right before town meeting. That would take place, that would take the place.
I'm unemployed, so, you know, I'm free to pick at any time.
Yes, we know where you live.
You may have a different member that has conflicts. That's the reason I'm mentioning that.
So I think we'll plan on having our next meeting May 13th, if it's possible. Does that, it's the Tuesday before town meeting. We'll keep it, it won't be long. It will not be long. Also, just randomly, today's text alert from the town about, about the change on the website. I was like, "Justin, is this, is this real? Is this a scam?" Or whatever. And because I, you know, anymore, you get so many things that could be fake. And so I literally called and said, "Is that, I don't want to click on the link if I don't know if it's real." So what I did, I'm sharing handy hints from Anita. I went into my text, and I took that phone number, and I named it Town of Norfolk. So now if it comes again, I know it won't be a scam because it's going to say Town of Norfolk. Handy hints from Anita, because I wasn't sure. You don't want to click on something in a text unless you know the source. And it looked real, and, but he said I was going to be the captain of the, of the internet...
Cybersecurity.
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 And so that was my little handy hint. So then if, next time it comes, it'll say Town of Norfolk because that number's been identified by my phone, by me on my phone. And then also, early voting, thanks to Carol, is live and well. We have a full ballot, which is really exciting for democracy, and so please vote, please vote, please vote. Early voting is open all sorts of different times. It's on our website, and please be sure to vote. And if you want to wait and vote in the town election, it is on May 6th from, and the polls open at 7:00. Thank you, Donna. And they close at 8:00. So May 6th, Freeman Kennedy School, please vote. Voting is very important. And then the last thing I wanted to say is, when I was a teacher, I used to teach, but we talked about contrast. And so like when your kids made a little snowman or something, we talked about if you put the snowman on a white background, nobody's going to see anything, but if you put it on a navy blue background, it's going to really pop. Or if you're an author, if you're writing, if you're writing about something and you want to really poke the reader, you want to set, you know, you can have all the magic and sunshine and then bring in the villain, right? Then the contrast, it makes it really stand out. And to me, today, I felt like this is why we have, winter was for days like today. Like, the contrast of winter to today, it was just magical. And spring, this is why we live in this climate, not because winter's so great, but because spring is so awesome. And if we didn't have the contrast, we wouldn't savor the air today and the flowers, and so, happy spring.
I don't know, I'd take 70 degrees year round.
70? No! Then you have to move to North Carolina.